Okay, we'll go ahead and get started and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Egan?
You're on mute.
You're here.
Thank you.
Ms. Catalina?
Here.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Hyer?
Here.
Mrs. Crane?
Here.
Mr. Need?
Here.
Mrs. Horst?
Here. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community hearing. There is time for public participation as indicated on the agenda in items three and nine. Item two is approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Move the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mr. Hyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan? Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes, the motion carries. Item three is citizens' request to address the board. You are given two opportunities to address the board. Under item 3.1, you can request to address the board on any topic that's on tonight's agenda. Under item nine, you can request to address the board on any topic. When asking questions or making comments, please state your name, your address, and direct your comments to Kelly Horst, President, Clarkston Board of Education. Now, as we've done in the past, I've asked you if there was a particular topic that you wanted to address the board on, and I'm going to take a wild guess and say that most of you are here tonight for our presentation on our 2020 plan for returning to school. So rather than try to ask you to go ahead and sign or identify yourselves now, I'm just going to go ahead and say if you were interested in addressing the board tonight on that topic, go ahead, let me click on this so I can see you, go ahead and you click on attendees and then you click on the raise hand function. So rather than trying to generate a list now and then get to you when we get to item five, just go ahead and indicate your interest now. So when we get to that item, we will have our discussion and then we can just go ahead and start calling on attendees who are interested in addressing the board. And if there are any, I guess, who would like to address the board on personnel changes, we'll deal with that one when we get to it. Just making sure I don't click any buttons I'm not supposed to, Mr. Hyer will get mad at me. Okay. All right, thank you. See, you're doing what I asked, appreciate that. So just go ahead and just keep doing that and we're going to move on with our meeting. And then, of course, when we get to the end at item nine, there'll be plenty of time for anyone to address the board on any other topic that's on your minds this evening. So item four is superintendent update. Dr. Ryan?
Thank you, President Horst. I think I'll save my update from our opening remarks as part of our presentation for our community tonight. Thank you.
Well, then, we'll just move right into the heart of it tonight, which is our item five presentation items, our Fall 2020 Return to School Plan. And just as a little bit of background, obviously, this is something all boards of education are hearing from their administrations. We all have to approve across the state a plan per the governor's Safe Schools Return to School roadmap. So tonight, we are hearing from Dr. Ryan and our administrators, the Return to School Plan for Clarkston. We will have some discussion among the board. We will then hear from our staff and community, those in attendance tonight who wish to comment on the plan. And I'm sure there will be opportunity this week where we will hear from others who wish to share thoughts with us. We will return next Monday to approve that plan per the deadline given to us by the governor. And I will now turn it over to Dr. Ryan and our administrators for the presentation.
Thank you, President Horst. And it's my honor tonight to really shine light on the work that's been done for our presentation this evening that is going to provide the best thinking that we have so far in our reopening plans and contingencies for Clarkston schools. But kind of as a preamble or a front load of this information, I wanted an opportunity to share with our community and our board what's been driving my thinking and keeping me up late at night over the last several months. And I came to the notion that looking at a rationale for proposing plans and looking at their implementation, that it's very fair for our community to get really an insights on what the superintendent is thinking. And I'm thinking along the lines, and I tried to put into a couple, three power words that really represent the direction that I feel like I'm driving and helping support our district right now. And those words that came to mind are unity, preparedness, and hope. And really looking at unity as the kickoff, as being not only a unity in a straight term of connection between us as human beings, between us as staff members, employees of Clarkston schools, unity between us and our families and our community in Clarkston, and most importantly, the unity that we have with supporting our students that all of us are behind. And I think that really has to be an underlying look because we have to have unity of purpose as well. And to me, the unity of purpose for our school district is the education and well-being of our staff, students, and families within the idea that Clarkston Schools is doing its best to serve our community, serve our staff, and do the best we can to provide the education opportunities and the overall well-being of our staff, community, and students. And to that end, I think it's fair to look at what our unity of focus is. And right now, it's August 3rd, 2020. It's been one heck of a year. And on my mind, related to unity of focus and continuing to examine the different scenario strategies that we're going to present tonight that we look to employ, I would ask our community and our staff and our board to really look at right now compared to several weeks from now, we could be living in a much different world. Conditions in tract of the virus right now in Michigan and the United States are very concerning. They seem to be heading in a solid direction as a country. And fortunately, Michigan right now has many indicators that hopefully, but probably not likely, will be able to stay intact with respect to the progression of the virus. But simply on August 3rd, for that variable, I can tell you with great certainty, no one knows what the next couple of weeks will entail. And if you could tell me, based on the dozen or so doctors and public health officials that I have queried directly, I think they would appreciate if you knew as well. Because they are like everyone else, waiting to see the progression of how this virus, this pandemic continues to move across our state and country. And with respect to that, looking at specific guidance that schools are receiving as part of the reopening, tonight, we provide many insights that are actually provided from a county across the state near Grand Rapids, Kent County. Because as of today, August 3rd, your superintendent has still not been given direct notification by the Oakland County Health Department on what the legal requirements and expectations for the safe opening of schools were required down in our county. No superintendent in our county has that information. And we're relying on counties across the state to try to look at drawing a line at most likely. That's concerning to me, as well as the progression of the virus. And finally, the operational continuity of maintaining school across this year is on my mind. I believe that if we don't prepare for multiple scenarios of what it would look like, we're going to be at a great disadvantage. Because not only can we not predict what the world's going to be like in a couple of weeks with any certainty, we have no way of predicting what it's going to be like in six months, nine months. Hopefully, a past year from now, we're going to have a vaccine and putting this behind us. But we're not there right now. And as your superintendent, I need to keep a close eye on not only that safety piece, but the healthcare piece and the health of everybody piece, but also looking at maintaining school of whatever we design it. Because if the conditions aren't right where we can keep that consistency, then there will not be any kind of school that I'll be proud to make sure that our community has across this year. So when you talk about focus, there is many areas that still have very great variables to them. And as we watch that progress over the next several weeks, I reserve the right, working with our Board of Education, to make recommendations at any moment based on new information for the best interest of our staff and our community. And I'll exercise that judgment that I've built over the last several decades and my reputation that stands with a superintendent and as administrator and a school leader that looks at facts and data and also has a focus on people. That will not be lost. But I'm not going to be foolhardy and immediately rushed to one conclusion or another based on incomplete information. Heck, right now, August 3rd, the state of Michigan has not supplied the schools across the state of Michigan, any semblance of idea even what our financial picture is to be able to support this so-called learning that we're going to deploy this year. So obviously, there's a tremendous amount of ambiguity. And it would be easy to feel negative about it, but instead, I look at what options do we need to make sure that are available to our students and our staff and our community? And how do we make sure those available, those opportunities are available at the time we need them across this school year? So that goes on to my second point, which is preparedness. As we sit, August 3rd, Clarkston Schools is going to continue to plan actively to make sure that we're ready for both in-person learning with an amazing amount of safety conditions employed and also at-home learning. We will have full plans to be able to support both versions. And some have contacted me, shared their thoughts that, why can't you just pick one like several other school districts are doing across the state already? And I would tell you that as soon as those variables I already referred to are more clearly defined over the next several weeks, I will absolutely push this down a path. And not until then. And I also say that we're likely, I would say arguably, right now, across the school year, to have to be in multiple learning formats potentially. And to be prepared to be able to seamlessly enter those formats is critical. We, as a community, administration, and as a district as a whole, observed that transition back in March, and it was extraordinarily difficult. With arguable gains and a tremendous amount of work put in, it was not the kind of format that we would have obviously picked to immediately switch to on a moment's notice. And I prepared our district, and I want to push our aims to make sure that we're ready for both those elements. And when it comes to making sure that we have those opportunities, we've been working at great length and to great exhaustion to make sure that we're ready to go regardless of the format and when we need it, whether it's going to be at the end of this month or in October or January or next year. Whatever conditions arise, we're going to be ready for them. And I have to also put out a call, a serious call, to our families in Clarkston to begin preparing those contingencies for both in-school learning and at-home learning. I wish those variables that I referred to in my unity section were not the way it is right now. I wish there was a clear picture where I could just say, obviously, based on these series of facts, that we can conclude on this today. That would not be prudent. But it needs to be heard by our community and our families that you need to make your plans, starting now, looking for this school year, of what at-home learning would look like, whether that means examining your bandwidth in your house. Because obviously, with our one-to-one technology, we're going to supply everybody, as you're going to hear in our plan with technology, and hotspots where necessary, but you need to be prepared for that. You also need to be prepared for daycare and looking at what contingencies that you have in place based on potentially a very short notice about us going from in-person or back at-home learning or vice versa. We need to react to a larger world of which we get certain amount of decision-making power within. But preparedness right now is key. And I would ask our families to make sure that you're ready for all elements and have a family plan as we begin this school year. It's going to be critical. So you're going to hear Clarkston Schools' version of preparedness, both for at-home and in-person learning. And obviously, in a perfect world, our desire absolutely at all possible is to in-person learning, but we have to evaluate that as we progress towards the start of school. So lastly, I want to speak to hope. And what I have hope as your superintendent is that our path will continue to get clearer as more of this information is filled in over the successive weeks. And I have a hope and a faith that our administration, our teachers, and everybody affiliated with Clarkston Schools will continue to put meat on the bones of the micro details as we move towards whatever learning format eventually materializes. And I also have hope that this crisis that we're in, like all crises and challenges, will not last forever. And it's important that we remember that although these are tough times, as we did in the spring and through the summer, we will continue to navigate that with that sense of unity and purpose together as a community and take this on for the best of our community. I have hope in that. And I have hope that I'm going to be able to look back a year or two years from now and know that with the incredible team, and I speak to the Board of Education as part of that team, our community, our families, and everybody pulling together, that we're going to look back at this community and be proud of what we see because whether it's about food, well-being, mental health, academic health, safety of all levels, that we can be proud of the decisions that we made along the way and the process that we took to get there. So I want you to know that I'm committed to those principles. That's my philosophy as I kind of pursued this as we move forward and will continue to move forward. And right now, my team is going to take us through the elements of our current planning, both the at-home and the in-school versions. And we're going to look at the aspects this evening of academics, operations, whole person, and our communication efforts. And first up with our mission and how it transcends as the groundwork and foundation of this work will be Ms. Mary Ellen Rowe.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ryan. And I'm very proud myself to be a part of this work. So we're going to start this meeting the same way that we start our meetings here at Central Office with, just by putting our mission statement in the room. And it was very central to our planning when we set off to reimagine what learning would look like in Clarkston in 2020. So our mission statement is, Clarkston Community Schools creates a learning environment where students, staff, and families are challenged, healthy, engaged, safe, and supported. And so in making mission-driven decisions about how we'll approach this fall, we really stuck with this central idea, or as Dr. Ryan put it, this unity of purpose, that we will put our students, staff, and families first. So we started the way that any people-focused organization would start. We started by listening to our people. And when the governor released the My Safe Schools Plan back in June, we presented an online survey to our community that was open, administered from July 2nd through the 12th. We had strong feedback. We had over 5,000 responses from students, staff, and parents. And we were really looking at those required elements of the plan as well as some of the strongly recommended elements of the plan. We wanted to hear from our community how comfortable they were with these learning models that we had come up with. We had more than half said that they were comfortable with the proposed models. You can look at the full survey results on our website. But that really did help us set the groundwork for this plan. And then, looking at the elements that our community told us were most important of these recommended elements, increased cleaning and sanitizing, hand washing opportunities, and availability of hand sanitizer, limited visitor access and screening, daily employee cell screening, removal of symptomatic persons. Those kind of floated to the top of the list for our community, and those elements are reflected in this plan. But most importantly for us was the feedback that we received in the open-ended portion of that survey. We were able to really hear what people were worried about. We looked at the suggestions that they provided, the nuances of their family circumstances. So that gave us a good snapshot of what our community is really feeling right now. We also provided an opportunity for the respondents to share their contact information. And so members of our team have been following up with them in the weeks since that survey closed. Again, just going back to this people-focused planning, we wanted to focus our plan on two-way communication so that we're listening to what our community has to say and we're also providing regular updates. So we started this work by forming four task forces. As Dr. Ryan suggested, we have an academics, operations, well-being and community, and a communications task force. And we were so pleased to see that our staff, more than 200 teachers, counselors, social workers, psychologists, and special education staff wanted to join us in this work. And so we've been hard at work putting these ideas together, testing them, and just massaging them as we go. We looked for employee input, not only in the survey, but we've been receiving emails and phone calls and having that contact with our employees. And we plan to continue that. We want to hear what's on their mind. We're having staff meetings in each building this month. We've reached out to our parent community through our parent advisory team. We have a focus group planned with those folks. Our parent advisory team is made up of our PTA, PTO leadership. And so we're getting a good perspective across the district. Community input, we have in the next week or so planned virtual panel, much like this board meeting where we would be the panelists and we would have opportunities for a Q and A, whereas this board meeting doesn't allow for us to respond to you, this virtual panel will have that, more of that back and forth feel. And then, just for ongoing communication, we set up an email, fall2020@clarkston.k12.mi.us, where folks have been emailing and we've had members of our team responding specifically to those inquiries. And they've also been informing the Q and A that we developed. It's on our website, Clarkston, our district website, backslash fall2020, and as well as the weekly superintendent updates that I mentioned and regular updates on our social media account. So we appreciate the dialogue that is generated whenever we have a communication come out, and those channels are monitored and they do inform our decisions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our task force leaders to take you through this plan. First up, we have Nancy Mahoney. She is our assistant superintendent of instructional services, and she also headed up our academics task force.
Good evening, Board of Education and all participants attending our school board meeting this evening. Just looking at this diagram, I would like to speak to the distance learning model that is phase one, two, and three. Also be speaking to our face-to-face instruction model, phase four, five, and six. Regardless of what phase, Clarkston Community Schools enters or resides, we do have a Clarkston Virtual option that you will hear from tonight. Kenji and Seric, our administrator that oversees Clarkston Virtual, and that is a go regardless of all phases. What is our mindset as we begin this very unusual year? And I just counted, if we count August and we left March 13th, that's a six-month span. We think about our academic priorities and how important it is since the last time we actually saw students face-to-face. And we recognize the fact, and Dr. Ryan highlighted, that although we did our very best in the spring, we can all agree that it was not ideal for optimal learning for our students, our teachers, and our families. That's why academic screening is very important, whether we're in phase four, phase three, face-to-face, or distance. We do want to partake in academic screening to see where our kids are academically, knowing their needs and how we can support. We'll be looking at providing support structures for our students and make sure that their learning is optimal and moving forward. Progress monitoring, we're going to continue that as we move forward to check in, to see how our students are doing and what instructional practices are needed to be put in place to support their learning. And leaning heavily on our subject area coordinators who have been working very hard, starting in April with work groups and our special education department, thinking about the needs of students and how we can support and guide our students as we move forward academically. We know that in school, scheduling is going to have to look different than it was in the past. Socially-distanced passing periods for classroom cleaning will have to be addressed. Our instructional practices will also have to shift when it comes to how we collaborate, how we mix kids. We have to be sensitive to minimize those possible exposures in how we collaborate with our current instructional practices as well as mixing of kids. In a distance learning setting, the day will remain structured, much like school. We want a mindset that kids are going to school, they will be attending school. A sample distant learning school day will be shared very soon. We're evaluating that closely right now, and it will be shared soon this month in August. Clarkston Virtual School Day is self-paced. Ken, again, Ken Seric, our administrator for Clarkston Virtual, will highlight that today. You will see on here, there is an attached daily schedule that is located on our website, and you can access this through this slide. Curriculum expectations always remain high in Clarkston, and we're very proud of that for staff and students. Recognizing, again, that this is a very unusual year, we will be student-focused, we will be student-responsive, and we will move learning forward in the best format that we possibly can, whether we are face-to-face, whether we are distance learning. Our teachers will be collaborating, we will be engaging them in professional learning, again, so that we can move learning forward very best that we can. So I want to speak now to face-to-face instruction. District-wide face-to-face in-person learning, this is for models four through six. And we want to keep this as close to a traditional in-person learning as possible for the health and safety, and we will be modifying accordingly. Students will be automatically enrolled in face-to-face instruction. No action has to be made by parents to join and come back to school, and it is the, hopefully, family's preferred learning model, coming back to school face-to-face. Elementary student grouping, these are cohorts, and this is what we're focusing on in young fives through grade five. Elementary co-curriculars will push into the classroom. Lunch will be eaten in the classroom. Again, this is to keep kids together to minimize transitions and exposure. A modified recess schedule, so smaller groups on the playground for social distancing has to be thought out, and we will be engaging. Again, we won't have 200 kids on the playground, we'll be looking at a modified schedule for the safety of our kids. We're super excited about one-to-one technology. All students will have a device. Devices will be provided for teachers and students to be utilized both in school and at home, depending on the phase. We want to minimize shared resources. Frequent cleaning and resources, excuse me, of our resources, manipulatives are being addressed. We're also looking at purchasing more manipulatives so students do not have to share. Borrowing and sharing of our Learning Commons resources. So I just met with our media specialists in terms of how can we utilize books, the resources there in a very safe manner. Utilizing alternative spaces, we think about our outdoor learning spaces that we want to utilize. No masks are required with six feet distance if we are outside. PE will be outside whenever possible, and if we do have to come in, lessons will certainly be adapted for indoor with masks. Large classrooms, auditoriums, and outdoor tents for music classes, again, keeping students as far apart as we possibly can. No assemblies or audience performances. And athletics, this is Michigan High School Athletic Association will be following their guidelines, and extracurriculars at this time are permitted. If we do fall into a phase three, this is a contingency, so this is distance learning, and that means that our students will be learning from home. Again, we are one-to-one technology. This is ideal to ensure that remote learning shift can happen swiftly and efficiently to maintain this continuity of learning. This is not the same as opt-in Clarkston Virtual again, and this is not going to be considered crisis schooling like we experienced in the spring. We will be engaging in professional learning for our teachers so that we can have, again, a solid educational experience that teachers can be teaching their kids at home. We're looking at pacing, assessment, grading, daily attendance, and curriculum progress for this in-person learning expectations. And I do want to highlight how important relationships are, even in a distance learning model, that our teachers will be connecting with kids, we will know our kids, and that communication is going to be vital to make this experience successful. We'll be setting daily login times for teachers and students with more daily interaction. This is going to be a synchronous model of instruction and frequent real-time contact with students that will be established by classroom teachers. A revised daily schedule that's going to be providing structured learning will be shared. We'll be including activities, tasks, and assessments that will be scheduled, and they will be required. Clarkston Community Schools will be utilizing two platforms, Seesaw and Google Classroom. We have gotten feedback sometimes that these platforms have some glitches. I've communicated with Lori Banazak, these two platforms are being updated. And so for Seesaw, our young fives through grade five teachers have been utilizing, as well as Google Classroom in grades three all the way up through grades 12. Professional learning for technology will be provided, and I'm working closely with Lori Banazak and our technology department to make sure that that is going to happen. And the access to materials and progress with our grades will be communicated well with students as well as parents. with students as well as parents, parents throughout this learning experience. And now I'd like to introduce Kenji and Sarah. Ken, I'd like you to speak to Clarkston Virtual.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to have the opportunity to talk with you regarding Clarkston Virtual as well as our recent resource study that we conducted. I'm looking at the survey and knowing that all families would be comfortable returning to in-person, uh, Clarkston Community Schools proudly offers Clarkston Virtual, which is a 100% online learning program for students in grades young five through 12th grade. For families interested in Clarkston Virtual, for staffing purposes, we are asking for families to notify us by Friday, August 7th. With that, you know, Clarkston Virtual is a program, it's standards-based curriculum. Um, it's delivered in a flexible learning environment through an online platform, uh, supported by Clarkston teachers. So as Mrs. Mahoney was talking about in regards to distance learning with Clarkston Virtual, it's really utilizing an online platform to support students within the standards to assist them in moving forward. This program is supported by highly qualified Clarkston teachers who are working with their students through their online program. It's a well-established program, but it's also continuing to grow. And with this conversation of growing, we really looked at the idea, it's not the idea of crisis schooling like Mrs. Mahoney commented on, um, it's an experience much different than that spring. Um, and it's going to allow students, whether they enroll for a semester or for many years, to continue to stay on track and move forward with their learning. If students choose this option for the start of the school year, they will be supported by these Clarkston teachers during the day, both by in-person if possible, depending on the phase we're in, as well as through virtual groups. During the semester, if families reevaluate their decision, uh, they will have that option to return back to that in-person traditional school. Currently, families that are interested in Clarkston Virtual, uh, they, all they have to do is complete the Google form that's on our website and as of today, over 400 students have looked into that Clarkston Virtual. As we continue the enrollment process, there may, will we continue to add to that questions, add to that Q and A that you see on the website. Starting the 2021 school year, um, it's going to be unique in terms of with the different phases we're in, uh, but one thing that will be consistent that we've already talked about is the idea that Clarkston Virtual will be there available for families. They'll be there in terms of students will be working in the self-paced platform. Rather than the daily attendance of login times, students will be checking in with their mentors daily and it's that mentor log that's going to be used for the attendance purposes. Clarkston Virtual students will have the, have the, the ability to use the one-to-one device at home to support their learning. During the day, depending on the phase we're in, Clarkston mentors will be holding in-person and virtual meetings for both small groups and individual lessons. We talked about it a minute ago in terms of the distance learning and the social emotional. The idea of Clarkston Virtual will continue to push those small groups for both teaching and social emotional. An example to that could be maybe a math lesson. Let's say a student was struggling in a math class, that teacher, if it was a first-grade teacher, could then reach out to either an individual student or a group of students to support them, but that also could transfer all the way into the algebra side of things. As we transition into the idea of virtual, um, while our students will be working in an online platform, um, they will have the ability to have a low student-to-mentor ratio to have that constant context. So if a student is struggling with an algebra concept, they can reach out to their mentor instantly to get some weather, whether it be a feedback, additional support. If mentors notice trends in their students, just like in the classroom, they can pull small groups, uh, they can add additional teaching. One of the big components within Clarkston Virtual will be that ability to modify and manipulate the curriculum to meet the individual student needs. In order to accommodate really this idea of the Clarkston vision for Clarkston Virtual, uh, we really needed to conduct a resource study, um, in order to really look at within that academic task force. Our previous online providers that we were utilizing did not meet that expectation of Clarkston Virtual and us moving forward. It didn't really allow for that manipulation of the curriculum to support the students. As we moved through there, um, we had a group of amazing Clarkston teachers, uh, learning coach, administrators, they did a phenomenal job. Really what their job was is to find a resource to meet and support our students, our Clarkston students. Uh, within that resource study, uh, they did online logins where each participant spent time looking at what a student would see in the online platform, what a parent would see, as well as what a teacher would see. In addition to the demos, each one of the platforms hosted virtual demonstrations where the platforms really get to come forward and show us all the bells and whistles, what they have to offer for our Clarkston students. As a resource study worked, they were really set with that task to find an online platform that was adjustable. The ability to manage and manipulate it with our, within our Clarkston teachers, really the ability to support students at all levels, aligned to what is done in Clarkston as well as the ability to have students be self-paced. If a family was to choose the virtual model, that self-paced would allow them that flexibility within the school day. Yes, they could follow the sample schedule that we have online, but it would also allow for some flexibility within their day as well as a quality resource. As a resort, result of that resource study, it was very clear that looking at, we had two different platforms, uh, that really stood out. Within the elementary, Lincoln Learning really stood out in terms of that one platform. The K5 teachers, administrators, and staff that came forward really felt that that Lincoln Learning was an easy-to-use interactive platform that aligned closely with what we currently do within our Clarkston classrooms. There's a digital library, it's student-friendly, it's aligned to what we're doing, but most importantly, it's got these additional benefits that are going to help us with our students in terms of looking at it. All the students that are working in that online platform, the Clarkston mentors will be able to manage and manipulate what the students are learning. So example was given earlier about a student that maybe was struggling within some of the content areas. Lincoln Learning would allow our Clarkston teachers to take additional content and add it in there to support a student who is struggling with something. So if a fourth grader was struggling with fractions, they could do some additional prior knowledge and some pre-teaching to help support that student. Within Lincoln Learning, our elementary students will also have the opportunity for some hands-on materials to support their online platform classes. So Lincoln Learning will be an interactive online platform, but because elementary is so heavy within some of those, uh, hands-on materials, we'll supply some of those materials to support the learning. Just with Lincoln Learning being that overpowering within the idea of K5, Pearson Canexus really stood out with our 612 students. The interactive platform offered students a wide variety of online classes supported by our Clarkston teachers. Students would be able to take their six-through-12 schedule and in most cases, be able to just transfer over into that virtual setting. We wouldn't have to adjust many of the classes they were taking due to the, having over 500 courses available. And these courses would be not just the traditional ELA math, algebra, we also have traditional courses in tur, that have AP, we have credit recovery, we have fundamental, but we also offer advanced courses for gifted and talented in terms of within the middle school. Both Pearson Canexus and Little Lincoln have countless benefits for the students that are working. The biggest one in terms of it was this idea of the flexibility to manipulate the curriculum. Clarkston teachers will be able to take, because we've been out of school for a period of time, will be able to assess the students just like we did, talked about in traditional or in distance learning, will be able to do that in the virtual learning as well to really support those individual students to get them moving forward. Within each platform, um, there's a range within the cost within them. For Lincoln Learning, young fives through fifth grade, it is a bit more expensive because it has that component of hands-on materials to go along with it. We felt that if we were going to look at an additional resource for, to support our Clarkston students, that those additional resources were extremely important. We have the capabilities of purchasing classes by full year or by semester, as well as what I talked about earlier, the, what's included within those classes would be a 700-course digital library. So teachers, teaching within the virtual and the students would have an access to 700 digital books online that they could actually manipulate and have. We also have the online curriculum library with Lincoln Learning. This would be a great resource with that in terms of manipulating, um, the content. Teachers will be able to utilize the curriculum library to add additional things in, offer support, but also enrich our students in moving them forward. Within all online platforms, there's an additional support plan, um, some of our higher, some are lower. With this one, we're looking at a premium support plan, um, which is really 200, 2,500 annually and it talks about professional learning, family professional learning, student orientation. We realize that when students move into this virtual model, some of them may have not had many experiences with it, so we're going to offer that additional professional learning for family, students, and staff. The additional resources to the right in terms of the manipulatives, the whiteboards, the science materials would be what's added down below, ranging right around $800 per student. There's a range within there because not all of the resource supply kits are the same price for each grade level. When we look at Pearson Canexus, Pearson Canexus also breaks things down between semester and for the entire year. We're looking at for, it's called an individual student seat, which is really one student for one semester taking six classes. And the single license would be one to two classes, potentially three for the whole year, 99, and then for, uh, for a semester would be 59. There are additional things that can be purchased within the curriculum, but for me, those are the three areas that we focus on, being able to have a single license for our students to access six classes a semester. Within this, there's also the, the additional package of $2,000 for the online platform, the professional learning implementation, onboarding, as well as that course catalog that's huge in terms of the amount of classes for students. For the secondary, it's an approximate anywhere between 398 and 474 per student for the, for the year. We can break that down. With both Pearson Canexus and Lincoln Learning, there were options for the entire year, but knowing that we're giving families an option at the semester, it's, it was important for the group to really look at the idea of semester at a time with their individual learning. I'd now like to turn it back over to Nancy Mahoney, who's going to wrap things up with our academic side.
Thanks, Ken. Like to speak to students with IEPs. So plans will consider, uh, the diverse and complex needs of individual students. Social emotional well-being will always remain our top priority with all students. Teams are exploring now how to support students transitioning back to school and acclimating to new and different schedules. In phases four through six, our IEP services will be offered in-person following district and state guidelines for students enrolled in Clarkston Virtual or face-to-face learning. And students enrolled in Clarkston Virtual will be assigned a special education teacher to provide IEP services both in-person and/or virtually. We are kicking back to phases one through three, students with IEPs will continue to receive special education services following all synchronous models. Accommodations outlined in students' IEPs will be implemented for participating in virtual or in-person learning for all phases. And special education transportation will most definitely continue to be offered to eligible students in phases four through six. Students will be required to wear a mask on our buses. Evaluations will be conducted in-person in phases four through six. For phases one through three, districts will provide safety guidelines established by the state in consultation with parents. For IEP meetings in phases four through six, this is in-person, families will be able to, um, provide a choice to schedule in-person or if they're more comfortable virtually, we will definitely adhere to that. And all meetings will be virtual if we are in phases one through three. Safety protocols such as social distancing and mask-wearing will follow state guidelines. Now, due to our unique needs of students with IEPs, every effort is going to be made to maximize those guidelines to keep students safe with, into our special education settings. Training and support for students and parents on the use of technology is definitely going to be offered as needed. I'd like to also speak to our early childhood education, um, and our leader Lisa Mirian is guided and she is in the audience today, but Clarkston Early Childhood Center will be following Michigan licensing for COVID-19 as well as all Michigan Safe School roadmap protocols directed by our governor. In-person learning will resume at our early childhood center in any phase. A virtual preschool option is currently being evaluated. Per Michigan licensing, these guidelines indicate that our early childhood parents will complete a daily health questionnaire for every student and the student's temperature will be taken before entering, um, each day in our school. And parents will not be permitted to enter the building, um, we'll have them use a designated drop-off and pickup locations that will be clearly communicated. And kids connection will certainly be offered, parents will use again that designated pickup and a digital sign-out sheet, um, when picking up their kids. I'm now going to hand it over to John Lucido. John Lucido is our assistant superintendent for, um, uh, administrative services and he's going to outline everything pertaining to operations. John?
Thank you, Mrs. Mahoney. Good evening. As Mrs. Mahoney stated, I am going to be covering the operations segment of our, of our team and how we're going to be in compliance with the Michigan Safe Schools roadmap. So our on-campus healthcare support, Oakland County Schools received CARES Act funding and they've used that funding to hire a number of nurses. They'll be deploying these nurses throughout the county. Every school district is getting a different number of nurses depending on their student population. Clarkston is going to be receiving two nurses and we plan on these nurses joining us within the next two weeks. And the, we'll be able to use these nurses as part of our team to navigate, um, you know, reopening our schools and dealing with COVID situations that, that arise with us returning to face-to-face instruction. They will also be meeting regularly as a county and will have a direct contact with the Oakland County Health Department. We will be continuing with our healthcare clinics. Yeah, Sashabaw Middle School and North Sashabaw Elementary, which is a partnership with Clarkston Medical Group. Clarkston Medical Group continues to be a great partner for Clarkston Community Schools. We've been relying on them heavily over this time to bounce questions off of and use as a resource as we've been preparing. Health screening. All employees must, must self-screen and complete a health questionnaire prior to reporting to work each day. We've created a UR code that our staff will be able to, um, just scan with their phone to complete the questionnaire to make it as simple as on them as possible. We plan on making stickers that they'll be able to put on the back of their badges before they enter the building each day, they'll be able to scan and answer the questions. For families, we are asking them to self-screen for symptoms prior to the start of each school day and take their student's temperature. If they have a fever of 100, of 100.4 or higher, um, or experience any of the symptoms that are related to COVID, we are asking them to stay home and contact their building administration prior to reporting to school. Hand washing and personal hygiene, every classroom is going to be supplied with a fixed hand washing station or hand sanitizer. Supplies are going to be checked daily and restocked in every classroom. Students are going to be educated on proper hand washing on the first day of school and it's going to be reinforced weekly or more often if that is what is needed. We're also going to be privy education on how to cough and sneeze into their elbows or to use a tissue to prevent the spread. Public health protocols. So an individual who displays symptoms of COVID-19 will be isolated in a designated, designated space, whether they are staff or, or students. We will have a room that is available in each one of our rooms, each one of our buildings and we'll have the appropriate medical equipment, PPE, and an air purifier. And then we'll have a protocol for parents to pick those students up from school. Response to confirm positive cases, it will require self-isolation for 10 days, fever-free and no respiratory symptoms for three days. And then we'll be quarantining any close contacts, that's anyone who was within six feet for more than 15 minutes without a mask. That will be a 14-day period. Continued, continuity of a learning plan for quarantined students, we are still developing that. We do have, um, plans that we do for homebound students, um, like in years past, if they needed to be out of school due to medical reasons, but we will be continuing to develop that to have a more robust, robust program in case the numbers increase. So the definition of quarantining, that's someone who was in close contact with someone who has COVID-19, um, and quarantining is keeping them away from others in case they become infected. People should stay home and monitor for symptoms during this time. And then isolation, that's keep someone who is sick or tested positive for COVID-19 from people who are not affected, even in their own home. If a student or staff member tests positive for COVID-19, the person will be excluded from school to isolate. If a student or staff member tests positive for COVID-19, the person will be excluded from school to isolate at home. And close contacts are notified to monitor for symptoms and quarantine for fourteen days after their last date of close contact. The person may return to school after three days with no fever or respiratory symptoms, in which are cough, shortness of breath, and ten days have passed since their first symptoms have appeared. If a student or staff member is symptomatic and pending lab results for COVID, the student-staff person is excluded from school until the results of the test are negative. If negative, the person must be symptom-free for twenty-four hours without the use of medications prior to returning to school. Close contacts are notified to monitor for symptoms while the person is waiting for test results. If symptoms develop, they should self-isolate and call their medical provider to be tested for COVID. So face coverings, as mandated in the Michigan Safe Schools Roadmap, every student and staff member must wear a face mask when entering the building unless a medical exception is provided. Medical documentation will be required for a student to be excused from wearing a mask. Masks will be required for all staff district-wide and all students in grades K-12 at all times, except when socially distanced at lunch or outdoors. The decision to require masks for elementary students was based on the district's responsibility to keep all students and staff safe and keep schools open. With all staff and students wearing masks, one positive ca-case in class may not necessitate the entire class quarantining. Only close contacts, as people who were within six feet for more than fifteen minutes without a mask, would be required to quarantine. All employees will be provided by washable, reusable cloth masks to wear at all times in the building. Although we are providing this mask, if there's a mask that they have that is more comfortable, they're welcome to, to use their own as well. And according to CDC guidelines, these masks should be washed daily. Teachers are also going to be provided with an additional optional layer of protection, and that is going to be a plastic face shield. We did do our research to, we were hopeful that the face shield would qualify for the mask requirement. But the studies have shown that that is not, not as effective in spreading the virus as a mask, so that does not meet the requirement. Reusable masks will not be provided for students. Disposable masks will be available in all buildings for students who come to school without a face mask. Adherence to district mask policies will be strongly enforced by district administration. Specific guidance will be provided to all staff regarding the enforcement of student mask policies. Students who report to school without a mask will be provided with a disposable mask and will be asked to wear it at all times. Parents will be notified by an administrator if a student refuses or shows a pattern of non-compliance over time. If a student refuses to wear a mask, we may move them over to our Clarkston Virtual program. Visitor protocols. Visitors to school facilities are restricted to essential personnel unless there is a pre-approved reason for their attendance. At every building, we have set up a visitor screening. And visitors will be required to complete the same questionnaire that we're going to be asking our students to complete and our staff members. But they will have to take their temperature right in the vestibule prior to entering our building. Visitors who are permitted, they must wear a mask and remain in a designated pertaining to the reason for their visit. And then each school facility, we're going to have a drop-off space if a student forgets their lunch or book. Parents can come and drop these things off without actually entering our building and risk further exposure. Cleaning and sanitation. All buildings will be deep cleaned and sanitized prior to the start of school by custodial staff using approved disinfectant products. District staff at all facilities will increase daily routine cleaning and sanitizing procedures. Touch points will be cleaned in between each class period. Additional disinfecting supplies will be in each classroom. Custodial will make increased rounds throughout the day. And areas contacted by a symptomatic individual will be closed and deep cleaned and sanitized by custodial staff per the CDC guidelines. Classroom configuration. We, there was a group of us who, who went to Bailey Lake Elementary and also to Clarkston Junior High School, and we set up these things. We set up our visitor protocol. We moved desks around, and later in future slides, you'll hear about how we've planned for lunch. So we have gone through and set our buildings up to see how this would work. And this is, these are some of the pictures of the work that we did that day. Class sizes will be at below traditional numbers, just based on the amount of students that are enrolling in our Clarkston Virtual program that were slated to be in in-face learning come the fall. So our, we do anticipate our class size as being smaller than usual. We're going to, we've moved the, the tables and desks as far as we can for maximum distancing. And classrooms for configurations, they're going to vary by grade level because we have different furniture per grade level. School supplies and water bottles. Students are going to be discouraged from sharing personal items with other students. We, we are asking that students bring any personal items that they need. Students and staff will be asked to have individual water bottles, which they can be refilled at the filling stations in our hallways. Students and staff will not be able to use our drinking bottles. Each building will be sharing specific grade-level school supplies list with families via email and on the school websites. So as I discussed earlier, these photos are also from our work that we did that day. Elementary students will eat in their classrooms or in another area where social distancing can occur, such as outside. We will potentially be using other spaces such as gyms and media centers in order to meet social distancing requirements. Same thing will, will, will be enforced with secondary. Masks are not required during eating and drinking. Hot lunch will be provided individually packaged portions instead of buffet style. So an example would be macaroni and cheese, a dinner roll, sliced celery sticks. These will be pre-portioned, so they could just be placed on the tray to speed things up because of the social distancing, it will take longer to serve lunches. All Clarkston Virtual students are allowed to partake in our grab-and-go meal program. Meal prices will depend on student meal status, and those wanting free or reduced meals will need to complete an application. Distribution locations will be determined prior to start of school. For transportation, vehicle capacity and cleaning sanitation will adhere to the governor's return-to-school recommendations. Personal transportation is recommended if parents are able. It will reduce overcrowding on the buses and allow for more distancing between students. Masks will be worn by our bus drivers at all time. Siblings will be seated together, and we will not be allowing students to ride home with, with another student unless they are assigned with that bus route. Campus signage. Buildings will be marked by signage. We're going to be noting the capacity to allow for social distancing. At the elementary, we are going to be controlling the flow in the classrooms, hallways by the classroom teacher. And we're also, as part of the roadmap, we are required to post signage on our bathroom doors and throughout the building about proper hand washing and personal hygiene. So for employee supports, we have, we are providing a one-to-one personal device. If we are in stage three, which, which will be, our students will be home and our teachers will be doing virtual learning, we are going to allow our teachers to bring their, bring their children to school, and we're going to be providing supervision for them so they will can focus on their classes. Paid leave, we will be providing paid leave per the legislation for both if an individual employee is, is exposed to COVID and required to quarantine, or if one of the qualifying relationships, they will also receive pay for that. For substitute coverage, on a daily basis in Clarkston Schools, we have very many substitutes that are in our building. These subs usually will sub in multiple buildings, and we looked at this as a potential risk for increased exposure. So we are actively looking at different ways to do substitute coverage that will not, that will limit the number of individuals that are in our classroom. So we're looking at providing building-specific subs that will show up to one building every day that will limit the cross-exposure opportunities. Free counseling services, this is something that we've had in place for a long time. But, you know, as we've dealt with COVID, it's, it's had different effects on different individuals. And we do offer free counseling to our staff members. They're allowed up to five visits for free. And then in the fall, especially with us starting pre-Labor Day, sometimes it is, the temperatures have been high. And with students and staff wearing masks, we are allowing our teachers to have a relaxed dress code, whether that be sandals, shorts, as long as it is professional, we're going to allow them to be comfortable to get through, to get through the school day with all the requirements. And now I'd like to hand it over for well-being and community to Stacy Puzio, our Director of Well-being.
Good evening, thank you. When we look at everything that we need to do with academics, as well as with the operational components of it, we recognize the importance of well-being and working together in partnership with our families, with our staff, with our students. And how do we do that? One of the first things that we really want to examine is the emotional and felt safety. When we examine what that means, it's about that emotional connection and the feeling of safety with other people. And when we're able to do that, we have those relationships, we're better able to learn, we're better, better able to teach and be creative, innovative, and bold in what we do. And so this is work that we want to examine and really look at. If you could go to the next slide, thank you. So one of the pieces is a mental health screener. It is part of the roadmap that we have a mental health screener. If we are in-person, this will be something that our teachers will observe students with a few questions, and we will be able to document that and analyze that. If we are not in-person and we have not been able to do that mental health screener, we will have a well-being check-in that we will send to families and students to keep on track with where students are at. We will also do this for our staff members. And so we will have those check-ins that allow us to understand where our staff members are at and what the needs might be that they will have. It is also important for us to have daily check-ins with one another, for our staff members as well as for our students. And, and just understanding where everyone is at, what perhaps they're feeling when they're walking in, and to be able to understand what are some protocols for how we can respond safely with them? What are some of the de-escalation strategies that we can provide for our students, for our staff members even, to put themselves into a place of calm so that they can move forward in the day? We also want to examine the emotional safety plans for students and staff alike. One of the things is that our administrators will create a building plan for gradual exposure. Gradual exposure is understanding what we might need to do to enter back into the space of learning. This Wednesday, our staff will get a, their first Well-being Wednesday message that is about the gradual exposure, honoring what it will feel like to walk back into that building when we left in March, and honoring the grief of that, and then what that will mean for us as we move forward. Recognizing you looked at some of the pictures of where, how desks look, that looks different from what we ended up with in March. And so how can we honor that and recognize what that feels like and then move forward? We want that for our staff, and then we also want that for our students as well. And so we want our administrators to work on that plan of what will a gradual exposure mean for our students and for our families. One of the other things is that to identify and establish those daily and/or weekly routines and rituals that support the emotional safety. When you think about perhaps some of the rituals and routines and even gradual exposure for entering into the school year. So in my family, this week, we started the gradual exposure of going to bed at a set time and waking up at a certain time, and we'll back that up a half hour each week. That's a gradual exposure that allows us to get ourselves prepared mentally and physically for school. So what are some of the things that we can prepare ourselves emotionally for school? And what could that look like? And what are those routines that allow us to understand and expect that emotional safety for that? We will also want to have a time and space for students, as well as our staff members, to connect, listen, and heal. A brave space, a listening space that allows that support to happen. We want to incorporate that well-being and self-care in learning. We want that for our staff members as well, as well as just creating those opportunities for connection. Connection, student to student, student to staff, staff to staff, staff to family, and how do we do that? This means that we also have some more professional learning to examine. And what are the guidance and expectations for really the first six weeks of school? We cannot expect to walk into school and start learning the very first day right off the bat with everything that we need to examine from how we ended the year and how we need to come together to provide each other those supports with our students and with each other. We want to have those elements of emotional and felt safety in each of our classrooms and have those rituals put in place. We need to have that learning of how do we calm? How do we co-regulate with a student in helping them to connect and feel calm so that they may learn? How do we as staff members do that? How do we present ourselves? How do we help ourselves to feel calm so that we can move through the day? We also want to understand and have conversations about how we talk to students, both about COVID, as well as the racial unrest. What's happening in our community, it's impacting our families, it's impacting our students, it's impacting our staff. How do we have those conversations? Something that Dr. Henry has talked to us about is name it to tame it. We have to name it, we have to put it in the room so that we understand it. And then how do we establish those routines and daily rituals for safety? What does that look like? What does that sound like? What do I need to put in place in my classroom, as well as working with our families? How do we put that in place for our families and in our home? So one of those pieces is the well-being resources. And how can we partner with parents? How can we partner with families in our community to provide different resources for understanding that emotional safety? How do we de-stigmatize COVID-19? How do we have those conversations? Also, understanding the normal behavioral response to a crisis. When we think about when we first start school in a typical year, the first couple of weeks, we're tired. We might come home and go right to sleep, especially with our kiddos. This will be especially true in this situation because it's very different of what school will feel like and look like. And we have to honor that, and how do we provide those supports in our home? And recognize that a meltdown is just the way of a release, and how do we co-regulate with our, with our children? Understanding what are some of those practices of talking about trauma with children? What do, what are the things that we say? How do we respond? Again, that positive self-care, how do we promote the health and wellness in our homes? And those daily rituals as well at home to help bridge that connection with our school? How can I help my child feel emotionally safe at school? How can we together do that as parents with our students? As well as how can we help families respond when their children are not feeling safe? Who can they contact in the district? Who might they contact in the community to provide those supports when students need that sense of safety? We also want to provide supports for our staff and having those frequent check-ins that monitor where they're at, what the needs are. Understanding is, is there a need for daily check-ins or daily connections? Is there a need for weekly? And being responsive and honoring the needs where staff members are at. And in those check-ins, also being aware, what are some of the needs that they might have so that it could help ease the daily life stressors of being in that classroom and understanding how we can do that? There's also then a need for community partnerships. As Mr. Lucido talked about, is the district provided childcare for staff, which is in phase three? This is for dependents who are in ages young, five to sixth grade. The intention is to be a safe space for our students to be there, our staff's students to be there. It's not about tutoring and learning and expectations, but it is a space that if a teacher is conducting a virtual or distance learning lesson, what can their own children be doing so that they are provided a safe and supported place for that? We will have protocols in place for that. It's also connecting with our community entities to understand what are the needed supports that our community, our families are expressing. That might be school supplies, the masks and things like that. But it also could be the food, the utilities, mental health, what are the supports that are needed? And so we are putting into place our website. We have already a well-being website on our Clarkston main site, but we want to enhance that. We want to make sure that all of our stakeholders know the resources, where to find them, and to provide supports for that. The last piece is a preventative safety. We are examining, because of the one-to-one, we want to make sure that the devices that are in our students' hands, that we are able to monitor that, and we are using GoGuardian. This will alert students, or alert staff of students who might have thoughts of suicide or self-harm on activity online, and that provides us some information. It also allows us to monitor how students are using their devices academically and to be sure that they're online and engaged in the learning. There will be protocols for students, parents, and staff, and expectations for staff for how to use that. And again, another piece of professional learning on how to use those monitoring systems and understand. and understanding those processes and protocols. And I turn it back to Dr. Ryan.
Thank you, Ms. Puzio. Looking at its entirety, in the framework of an evening, this gives a snapshot of the possibilities we're looking at. And although you hear those protocols or the stages we are in reopening between 1 and 3, and 4, 5, and 6, looking at those as being guidelines in best-case situations. So as we hear the planning tonight and what we've already been able to complete, community and our board needs to understand that at the end of the day, end of the week, we will make our decision on whether we're going to be in-person or more in an at-home format as a district based on the conditions that begin and continue to materialize over the next several weeks. And it would not be fair for me not to characterize that I have great concerns that I feel like as a country and then eventually as a state that we're not heading in the right direction with that right now. And as more information becomes available and things reveal themselves over the next couple of weeks, I think we're going to be in solid footing to head in a direction. But regardless of how we eventually start school for this fall, again, I think that we need both those contingencies across this school year, and we are likely at one point or another to employ or deploy both of those learning formats as conditions warrant and as we move our district. And being constantly and being able to evaluate those contingencies and work in relationship to our county community health experts and looking at what contingencies need to be employed right in down-home ZIP codes that you saw tonight. So what you heard is kind of in a perfect world, where those would fall at within those contingencies. And I can assure you that we don't live in a perfect world, and we will make the best decisions based on information on hand. So as you see, we look at our two major learning formats, decided by the district, being based on contingencies that we need to look at of either being in-person with major restrictions or being at home. And we still will continue, as we go through this, to our parents to have that virtual option as well that they can self-select into. So right now, we're trying to pitch in a picture of options and looking at contingencies. And I have to also let our community and our staff know that we have heard loud and clear concerns on both sides. I've had a number of correspondences that suggested great concern on staff, looking at, you know, what is the relative safety margin? And what those contingencies will be to actually put into practice? And our message back to staff is we read you loud and clear, but we need to continue to ride this forward as we get additional information and we are able to really kind of zero on that decision. But it's not by lack of caring or thinking that we don't see the big picture. It's quite the opposite, is that we feel that we need to continue to collect information to see the direction based on the variables that I spoke of right at the beginning of the presentation that we're following. So I'd say the same thing with our families. You know, this is not a risk-free environment in any respect to be alive right now. And we need to evaluate, not only as the district makes its decisions, our families, including my family, need to look at what contingencies and what our tolerances and our individual situations as we select the options that are afforded us directly. So I think this is a major step forward, but I think it would premature on a final recommendation to say right now on August 3rd. And I apologize for those that want immediate responses and expect the district to be on square footing moving into the end of August. But I can tell you that based on my professional experience, knowledge, and research, we are right in a spot to be able to pivot either way as we move forward. I think I've been very clear that I have great concerns on the viability of an in-person learning format starting school, but I'm not at that level right now to feel like the final recommendation needs to be made in that. I also, again, I apologize and applaud our staff for having to look at both an in-person and an at-home learning format, that the conditions of the world right now dictate that we keep those options. But I also would remind everyone that, you know, whether we use it immediately or some point in the school year, that we're likely to need both those options at some point over the next period of time. So I would like to take the opportunity to thank the board and community for listening to that point of conversation and presentation thus far. I want to invite our Board of Education to ask direct questions. We'll answer those questions directly as we can. We'll capture and be able to respond at a later time on any questions that we're not able to answer right at the moment. And I would remind our community that in a very short order, we'll be providing a completely different format for community to be the focus, to be able to ask questions and directly on a panelist-type thing. And as long as we need to, we'll stand tall, answer questions, and collect information as we need to, to make sure that everybody has our best thinking available as they individually make decisions and get insight into how we are making school districts, or excuse me, decisions on behalf of the school district. So President Horst, that kind of encapsulates major elements of our thinking right now. And I ask if the Board of Education would like to sound in.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Ryan. I certainly noticed as we went through the presentation, participants and audience members, that many of you raised your hand, and we'll get to all of you in just a few minutes. I failed to mention at the beginning that if you were listening by phone, there is a mechanism for you to comment as well, and that's *9. That's how you indicate that you would like to address the board, so sorry about that. So if you are listening by phone and you want to address the board here on this topic, *9 is the way to do that. So we will have some discussion here among the board, and then we will switch to those who are in the audience tonight, and we will turn to our public comment section on this particular topic. So board members, I will defer to all of my colleagues here and let you offer some feedback or ask questions of our administration. And I will just go around the room. Is there anyone here just raised hand who would like to start? I don't know if I just want to call on anybody. Okay, Mrs. McGinnis, thank you.
I'll break the ice here. My first question is probably most likely to Mr. Lucido, based on this slide that speaks about public health protocol. First bullet is immediate removal of symptomatic person, and second bullet is response to confirmed positive cases. I'd like to have a little bit better understanding of the last several bullets regarding the confirmation of a positive case. I have known people who were COVID-positive, who had no respiratory symptoms, did have a fever. But my concern is that there's no request or requirement for a negative test within that positive scenario. And from the experience that I've seen, and I'm sure we all have seen a multitude of experiences, there is no one experience that is practically duplicatable. So I'm just a little concerned that there's not a requirement of the of a negative test before returning to school.
This is what was provided by Kent County. This is what we have in place at the moment. Right now, you know, we have experienced a positive case with some of the programs that we had to return over the summer. And we called Oakland County Health Department, and they gave us strict instructions to follow for this. Right now, we have this, we are anticipating last week to have clear guidelines from the Oakland County Health Department. That is coming, and we will be following it. But basically, when we get a positive case, we're going to be calling the Oakland County Health Department, and I plan on using these nurses to guide us through that. Right now, I haven't seen anything that requires a negative test after a positive test for someone to return to work, but we haven't had to navigate that just yet.
And frankly, as I asked, I somewhat realize that it might be cumbersome to every family to have that test. And I know that the response time appears to be very difficult in making any true reliable judgment as to whether or not the student is, or the person is or isn't still contagious. So I guess that's very possible that there's going to be more information from both the county, state, and otherwise on that area. So that's probably my first question. I really want to applaud the ability to provide for our teaching staff free childcare. We're in Phase 3. I know how difficult it is for teachers to be at home, potentially virtual, and have a child to have to care for. So I really applaud the administration for coming up with that alternative to assist our teaching staff. I'd like to know, do we have a slide of any kind that gives us a full budget impact regarding the virtual platforms? I saw the dollar amount. I guess right now, we can't plan because we don't know how many are virtual versus how many are considering in-person.
Right. We did, you know, that's a very in-depth question, Ms. McGinnis. There's multiple ways to look at this. Us creating a virtual program that we'll be rolling out, we feel that it prevented us from potentially losing students to other school districts who had the program in place, which is hard to quantify. The other piece of it is, as we have students move out of our brick-and-mortar buildings into a virtual, there would be an increased cost if enough students don't move from particular schools where we can eliminate, where we can shift the teacher from, you know, say, 3rd grade at Bailey Lake Elementary, for example, to a virtual classroom. There would be an increased cost for this program if we don't get out-of-district kids to enroll.
Perfect. And I want to understand, my question is, first and foremost, the safety of our staff and our students, cost is second. But I do feel that I still need to be mindful of what the cost is. Do we have a cost, what the cost for the Guardian technology monitoring is? The GoGuardian program that's going to monitor our technology usage?
I'm pretty sure we approved that in the last couple of meetings. I think that's pretty easy. We could find that and just send that out as a reminder, maybe in the weekend review this week. And I don't feel like, because it was cloud-based, I don't feel like that was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And in fact, I feel like Mr. Hyer asked that question as well fairly recently, and I want to say it was under $100,000, but maybe someone could get, we'll get that answer back to you, Ms. McGinnis.
I think right now, that's the extent of my questions.
The GoGuardian is $70,000 a year.
Thank you, Mrs. Rowe.
I'd like to also add in, President Horst, you know, looking at that transfer of staff, I don't see right now, and at a practical level, understand how Mr. Lucido would process as far as the total staffing in the district. Hard to find it imaginable that we'll be able to really move in the much way of teachers or class sections, nor do I think it would be desirable based on wanting to continue to push class sizes even lower for maximum spreading if people were in school. So I think it will be an added cost. But I think first and foremost, we want to offer that option for parents, you know, just as strong as we possibly can. And also look at making sure that it adds up to the quality that we expect for all Clarkston programming. It will be an additional cost adding on there. And I think we can begin to quantify that as we get more solid numbers of students that are going to elect that option.
All right. Thank you. Other trustee comments, feedback? And I know we had the opportunity, obviously, as our community and staff did, to review this over the weekend and submitted some questions that'll be answered through the week as other questions are. But Mr. Hyer, you had something?
Thank you, Ms. Horst. I've been on the school board for a long time, many years not as a parent. And being a parent of two elementary kids currently, I feel like whatever decision we make, I have to live with personally. And I think, you know, it's really a core tenet of the local control function of democracy that we have of being members of the community. It'd be really easy for me to make this decision for somebody else somewhere else. But when I have to live with it, and I have to make a decision to send my kids back, and certainly I want my kids and my family to be safe, you know, it's a big deal. And I think, you know, our administrators are in the same boat. The superintendent is in that same boat with his family. You know, our teachers are in that boat, protecting themselves and their families. And, you know, I think, you know, keeping that in mind is how we formulated this plan. And obviously, as a board, you know, we've gone back and forth on this. We put this plan together in kind of short order, but we're relying on experts. And, you know, the science will come around. I mean, I'd love to see a study that says, hey, if you're in school all day and you wear a mask, you're 99.9% safe. That study doesn't exist yet. We know if you don't wear a mask and you go on an overnight camp, you know, half the kids are going to get infected if there's somebody who's positive there. You know, I mean, the bad news kind of continues to come forward. And so hopefully, we're creating some good news as we go forward in truly an unprecedented time. I appreciate the flexibility that Mr. Ryan alluded to. Anybody that says they know absolutely doesn't, there's no way to know. We have to be flexible. A lot of the detailed questions that I think we're going to get, you know, we're going to answer all of them. We might not have the answer right now, today, but, you know, we're going to know what those answers are as we get closer and closer. And we're going to do this the best possible way we can. And that may not be mistake-free, but we're going to do our darn best to be as perfect as we can be in an ever-changing, you know, kind of odd, weird situation. And I think, you know, a lot of this is going to depend on all of us working together as a community. You know, I'm going to send my kids to school, and I'm going to do my best to make sure they're safe. You know, I mean, if a parent tests positive and the student has been exposed, I mean, we need that family to do the right thing. And we need to educate all of our families on what the right thing is to protect us all. And that's going to be a challenge, but we're going to do our best to communicate with our 5,500 families, you know, what the right protocols are, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. And everybody has their own set of challenges. For some, it's internet access, and that's an easy one, we can help with a hotspot. You know, in other cases, it's, you know, jobs and childcare and different components. And that's where a lot of our partnerships, you know, come into play. That's where working together comes into play as an entire community. I mean, we're going to have to pull together and do our best here. And that means, you know, I mean, the challenges in my house are not the same as the challenges in other families' houses. Some are, some aren't. But I think, you know, we really have to work together to make this work, and we're going to do that. And, you know, we have a completely separate virtual option, I really like that. If you're not comfortable, I don't want, you know, any parent to do something they don't feel comfortable with. We've got a virtual option that is nothing like what we did in the Band-Aid that was March and April and May. It's not that. You know, it's a unique program that we've been running and refining for several years now that has now been overhauled again for these purposes and gotten better each time. So I like that option for families because I don't want them to feel like, I don't want any family to feel like they're doing something they're not comfortable with given their own circumstances. And I like the in-person option. I think relationships are vital. I can't imagine, you know, having a classroom or a school or our entire community go to at-home learning, you know, because of certain epidemiological reasons where, you know, the science says, hey, the community spread is such that we need to close school down. If you didn't know your teacher, have a relationship with your teacher at that point, that would be devastating. You know, if we can get to a point where we form some of those bonds and some of those relationships, I think that's going to help in some of the craziness as we go forward. And so I like that aspect of it. I feel like with masks, you know, limiting contact, doing things outside as much as possible, keeping kids together, we have a chance to actually do this the right way and do it safely. And that is going to depend on a lot of our families coming along with that, you know, with us, and keeping it safe. But, you know, it's been a lot of work, and I appreciate the work. And there's a lot more work to be done. And, you know, I'm sorry we don't have all the answers. And I'm sorry too that this format is not, you know, this isn't the sort of Q&amp;A format that Mrs. Rowe alluded to earlier. You know, our board meeting is such that, you know, we're hearing this presentation for the first time. We've gotten the material, different components over the last couple of weeks as it's been put together. You know, we've provided input and questions already. But tonight's format is really to get the plan out there. And I appreciate all the survey feedback. I appreciate all the email feedback, any phone calls or in-person, I know, or virtual, whatever the method is that works for folks. I mean, I appreciate all that. Tonight is not really a back-and-forth. So, you know, anybody that has comments, I'd love to hear the input. I think we're all make better decisions collectively as a team when we have good input. But tonight is not a chance, you know, for the community to get questions answered. And I think emailing or contacting any of the administration or any board members, I mean, we'll certainly dialogue with you in that format. It's just not tonight, unfortunately. Tonight's a chance for us to make sure as a board, we're on the same page and, you know, give some direction to the administration that we're on the same page. And ultimately, we've got a couple more meetings scheduled, you know, one next week to continue to move forward and refine and get better at this. Because again, I mean, I'd love to have all of the answers right now for everybody today. And I appreciate the administration pulling, you know, I don't know if we're at 85% or, you know, of all the answers, but we've done a lot of work in a short amount of time. And there have been plenty of rumors out there as well, like, hey, and I've heard them. You know, I don't run into too many people in person, but I have plenty of virtual meetings these days. You know, Phase 3 is imminent, you know, and, you know, in some of my advocacy roles, in interfacing with some folks in Lansing, you know, I mean, they're all rumors. You know, that is not, there's no truth to that at this point. It's not imminent. You know, I think it's going to continue to You know, I think it's going to continue to tweak, the, the state will continue to tweak things on a piecemeal basis based on the, the public health information available, and we're going to react accordingly, you know, as Mr. Ryan said. And so I think we, we're making the best decisions we can make currently. I appreciate all the information, the involvement of the board, the input of the community, the future communication plan and future ability to, to dialogue and get more input from the community, you know, thank you. I don't have anything else at this point, but I know if I do, we'll certainly be able to get answers together.
Thank you, Mr. Hyer, and I would just comment back, one, we appreciate that input, two, that 2020 email gets to all of our administrators as opposed to just the one you want to contact. I do share several of those with our board president as well, and it's a way for us to, to have that, at least that feedback. Also, you know, we believe our community absolutely, both in staff and families deserves to have that input opportunities, both, and, and our trips will go to individual buildings to take input from staff, and also we'll have a forum where community members and families can ask direct questions, and again, we'll answer them for as many hours as we can stick around, that there's daylight or even darkness here to continue to field those questions as we look to determine the best answers possible moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Hyer.
Other comments or feedback from trustees, Mrs. Egan and then Mrs. Crane?
All right, thank you, Mrs. Horst. So I want to ditto many comments that have already been made in terms of appreciation for all the work the staff has been doing in terms of putting together this plan. And I think it's worth reiterating for those who may not have heard this earlier today or maybe have forgotten already that what we have to do as a board is we have to approve a plan, and that needs to follow the roadmap set out by the state of Michigan. And so we are doing this without all the information that we need, and we'll never have all the information to Mr. Hyer's point earlier, but there is just a couple little things, I guess, if I can, if we can get this somehow back to the board in terms of the budgeting items, when we look at that roadmap, there are some protocols, for instance, more frequent hand washing throughout the day of our students. So if there are additional costs, I mean, we went through really the platforms, the learning platform costs, but if, for instance, we have to purchase hand washing stations to put out in the hallway because we can't get so many students through all these bathrooms, restrooms in the high school or our secondary buildings, it would just be nice to know if there's a list of things that we need, just like we needed our one-to-one technology, so we're prepared for that. If we could just get a ballpark figure of what those things are and what we think we might be running into, knowing full well, we still don't have all the answers even from a budget perspective. So we're, we're going to do the best we can, I know. And then if we have any idea what we might think we could get from the CARES Act, which would help pay for some of these additional things that we need. But that's really my concern. Again, to Mr. Hyer's point that was made very well, you know, everybody has to make a personal decision, what's best for their family. It's going to impact not only just the day-to-day learning, it's also going to influence how families decide what extracurriculars their kids will or will not participate in, and how that will look. And this is, this is a strange new normal for all of us, and I think we're all committed to making the best decision we can for our community, keeping in mind, we know this, that to the best of our ability, we're going to try and keep people safe, but when we open those buildings up and we start bringing people in, we have the potential, we have the potential to be spreading this virus, we just, you know, and what percent, how risky is that, we just don't know at this point in time, but I appreciate everything that, you know, our staff has done and our administrators have done, and all I can ask for our community is to please understand we're going to make the best decision we can. I am hoping that more decision-making can stay local, because if we find that we are in a position here in our zip codes where we become a hotspot, just because the state is at Phase 4, hopefully we can at least make our own decisions in terms of, we just don't, we just might hit a certain threshold in our community, and we may say, we just, we just have to pull back and, and close our buildings for a, a certain amount of time. But I appreciate, Dr. Ryan, the ability that we're going to be ready for both. We're going to be ready for face-to-face and we're going to be ready for virtual. So again, a big thank you to our staff. So those are my comments and the information I would like to see more of. Thank you.
Mrs. Egan, just on response, you know, from administration, there is going to be an extraordinary high cost to personal protection, equipment, devices, everything that we're looking to deploy here, including the one-to-one technology. That was not in the original plan for Clarkson schools, but became a necessity if we had any notion both either at home or at school, learning moving forward. And in addition to the CARES Act, we're also starting an account with FEMA, which has some response back to help support schools and entities that are deemed essential to help support learning moving forward. So we're looking at those aspects, and I also appreciate your comment of looking at multiple layers of data as we make that, make those decisions. And I think I'd also employ that it's not simply the superintendent in a vacuum looking at local zip codes. I mean, to me, that is an immediate conversation with our local healthcare and public health supports to really help guide those decisions. And I appreciate using doctor, but I'm not that kind of doctor. And we have to be able, as a community, as a board and administration, to be able to lean on the experts to help guide us. The only thing that's making short, I know people say, well, this district over there has already made the decision, and et cetera, along those lines. In contact with the director, director and the, and the managing entities for our county, they have many questions in looking at the next couple of weeks of how things materialize. And when I'm looking at the responsibility to help advise the education well-being of over 1,000 staff members and over 7,000 students, I don't want to guess, I don't want it to be a premature decision, even if I have worries on my mind, I think it's critical that, you know, yes, we know where a portion of our community stands and their feelings on this, we know our staff and the feedback we receive by them, and I only ask that continued understanding as we press forward for a strong level of facts as possible in making those decisions. And I want to make decisions for the safety of our, and well-being of everybody involved in all aspects of that, and I do not want to make that as a decision that comes just straight out of fear. I want it to be banked on people that know what they're talking about, and I feel like my role is to get those people together. I use our prestige as a school district and any office administrator we have to get those meetings to make sure that we're getting those connections. So I hope to continue, again, as we ongoing next couple of weeks, to be able to address several of those questions you had, Mrs. Egan, and that we're going to move forward together. Thank you.
And Dr. Ryan, I think a couple of points that I don't want to be remiss is, is, you know, this work would not be possible with the absolutely awesome collaborative relationship we have with our staff, you know, it's been a true partnership, and, and I, as a school board member, on behalf of the community, I appreciate that partnership. It's not us making a decision and doing something that people have to come along with. I mean, it truly is, we've been lockstep throughout the whole process, and, and I think, you know, plus one to that, I don't want that relationship to, to not be highlighted. And, and secondly, there's a couple of dollar questions, and, you know, it's, it's kind of a weird format, sort of sitting back and watching a meeting that we're participating in, but, you know, I just, from a community standpoint, you know, I think as a board we've said, it, it, you know, it doesn't matter what it costs, we want to do this the right way. And, and I think it's important to just stress that and make sure, even though we're asking, how much does this cost or what does that look like? I mean, we have to be stewards of our community resources, and I think as a board, we've done an excellent job making sure we, we are managing the dollars accordingly with our administration. You know, I mean, safety is not an area we're going to cut any corners here, you know, whatever it costs, it costs, and we're going to find a way to make that work within our means. You know, I, I just, I want to make that point as well, I don't want anybody to think we're pinching pennies here, you know, we, we've been fortunate enough to save some dollars to, for a rainy day, and, and this is about as rainy as it could get. We want to make sure, we, we don't know what we're going to get from the state, we don't know what the CARES Act is going to do, and the feds are going to do, and the state is going to do. There's so many moving components. We know what we can do, and, and we have the dollars to be able to, to get through this here, and, and we'll continue to plan with the administration long-term as we're able to, but I just, I wanted to make those couple of points.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Crane.
Thank you, Mrs. Horst. I don't have a lot more to add comment-wise to what my colleagues have already very eloquently said. I appreciate all of the work that's been done by everybody all summer, it's been a very crazy summer year. As a parent of a child in the district, many of my colleagues have children in the district, I think we're all in the same boat and we're, may all make very different decisions, but more to Mrs. Egan's point, we, regardless of where our children are, or our nieces, or our grandchildren, or any of the family members we know, we have to vote on putting a plan in place. And one of the, I've tried to stay, I have not personally decided what's best for my family yet. I feel like everything's changing day by day, and I know that this administration has done wonderful job at changing day by day. New, new information comes in, we change our plan a little bit, and we're trying to make it as flexible as we can while still doing the best we can with the information that we have at the time. One of the things that I've really noticed in kind of keeping in mind that this community is all together, is that when parents are talking to me, I often get, well, most parents want face-to-face, from parents who want face-to-face, and that's probably because those are the parents that they're talking to the most, so the ideas that most want it. Or I get, well, most everybody wants a gap year, most everybody wants in-person, you know, remote learning from people who want it that way. So I think it's important to remember that as unbiased, you know, we try to keep the information as unbiased as possible, and we have to trust the scientists and the experts. So I'm trying to do that for my family, I'm trying to do that as we move forward with voting on a plan, and I think we all know that it's not easy for any of us. The only additional comment or question that I have, and I don't even know that we have an answer, it was just something that slightly worried me in terms of our teachers and the childcare that we're offering, let's say we have remote learning, and I thought I heard them say very specifically that it wouldn't be any kind of tutoring for their young fives through sixth grade children, and I understand that. But if our teachers are, are working all day, their children who are in young fives through sixth grade will also need to be remote learning, and that would be hard, I think, with just in a babysitter, per se. That was the only thing that I kind of thought was a little worrisome, and I don't know how to fix that.
Ms. Crane, to kind of address some of your, your comments directly, one is, I guess I'd have a vision that we would have more direct support for staff's fam, for their dependents that were in school in some format, and if we were actually in a format where our students were at home, I believe that I would have the resources based on those staff, you know, it'd be obviously a major reconfiguration of labor in terms of our resources to be able to do things, I think that would be paramount. And looking at, you know, that point of moving forward of people's viewpoints, we absolutely need to take, not for a grain of salt, but a reflection of our community and the decisions we make. But I think I'm very, very clear on looking at, you know, the aspect, you know, what do people want? Well, I'll tell you what I want to think is best as your superintendent, and that's in-person learning, okay? That being said, if the virus doesn't cooperate, if I don't feel in talking and things next couple of weeks that we're heading in a way that we can do it safely, I'm not convinced I can do it tomorrow safely. I'm going to be looking at two weeks where, where it really matters as we get in close, that will influence my final thinking. Also, in addition to the safety piece, it's just a straight-up operation of schools. If we have certain type of requirements when they finally get released by Oakland County in terms of their health requirements, to where we're constantly shutting down schools and classrooms based on their requirements, there's a tipping point where we can't even offer a continuity of program in school that makes sense. And I have to be really aware and cognizant of that. So again, I go back and I appreciate people's concerns, and some people either think, why aren't we just saying right now in-person, or absolutely, how could you put people in danger? I'm asking for more time to be able to evaluate that as that information comes in, and to make a sensible decision on the most information that we have. If you can imagine, I can imagine the pressure right now in, in, in speaking about my own children and, and members of the board who have those considerations. I mean, to extrapolate to the responsibility, again, of over 7,000 students and over 1,000 staff members, I don't take that lightly at all. I appreciate all the, the feedback, but in over two decades, if one thing I can bank on is that I've always tried to make the best decisions based on the information I needed to make those decisions, and I've always had a focus on people. If you know me, since I've been a guest teacher in Clarkson schools, I've had that, and I will continue to kind of use that as my own guiding light moving forward through this very difficult time. But I, I don't second-guess other school districts across the state and the decisions that they're making, but I am critical to look at, if I had to sit in their shoes, I don't know what I would be looking at to make those decisions, I just know the major gaps and information I have as I sit before you this evening. And I will continue to push hard to make sure I have that in my hands as I help guide our entire community moving forward. Thank you, Ms. Crane.
All right, thank you. Mr. Need and then Ms. Catalina, and then we'll move on to our public comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Horst. I too also have a student in the district, as do you, as does Dr. Ryan and some of our colleagues. We are looking at this from several perspectives. I don't have a lot to add either, I agree with Mr. Hyer's comments and Mrs. Crane's and my other colleagues. I do want to stress the two points, number one, we do need to maintain flexibility now, next week, and as we go through the school year, and we have to make decisions based on the best data available, and that's going to change. We are relying on experts, we're relying on recommendations from health departments, the governor's back-to-school plan, if you saw who was on her advisory council and her COVID-19 task force, it's students, it's teachers, it's administrators, it's experts in pediatrics and mental health and social work. So, you know, the back-to-school plan, I know people, some people don't agree with it, they think it's too harsh, they think it's too, too weak, but it's expert-based. We're going to make decisions based upon that kind of information, and I trust, you know, our superintendent and our, and our staff to give us the best options and that we'll end up approving the best plan available, maintaining that flexibility. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Need. Mrs. Catalina?
Hi, thank you, yes. I asked questions, they were answered through email, so I don't really have any questions. I just really want to thank the staff and the team that worked on this plan and really put a lot of time and effort and thought into this. It was very well thought out, the, the details and the information really kind of answered a lot of those first questions that anybody has, and now that we look at it, we can start asking those very detailed questions that really have to, you know, go into specific buildings or specific situations. So I just want to say thank you to the team that worked very hard on this, and you guys, you guys did a wonderful job, so thank you.
All right, thank you, trustees. I think I'll reserve any comments, I think, for the moment. I know we have a lot of members of our community who've been lining up to share their thoughts with us, so let me just reiterate that we are here to hear public comment. I know several of you have been chatting, asking questions to us, those questions have been captured and will be answered at a later date. So please remember, because of the format of our meeting, we are here to hear your comment. We are unable to respond to you or answer questions at this time, that's just the rules of the road for these business meetings. So we will now go to the participant list, we will just go down the list in order, please state your name, your address, and you will have two minutes in which to comment, and I've got the timer here, I'm sorry to be harsh with that, but I have a feeling when I look at the list, having watched the participant hands go up, we have a lot of you to hear from. So thank you again for participating tonight, for being interested in this tonight, we know this is a critical, critical topic for all of you, and you've heard from all of us how many of us have our own families and students in the district, and we're making these decisions right along with you, so.
Just want to recap, Mrs. Horst, on the steps to raise your hand just one more time.
Right, okay, so if you, if you haven't already done it and you wish to make a public comment, if you wish to address the board, you are going to go to attendees and you're going to click on the raise hand icon, hand, and then we will call on you. And I'm just, is it Mrs. McLean, are you the one that's going to activate and then deactivate?
I will try, I'm, I'm actually looking at participants on my phone and I don't think I can do that.
How about Mr. Hyer? Okay, I'm going to let, okay, so I'm going to let Mr. Hyer do that. Do, do you have a stop, I hate to say stop. do that. Do you have a stop, I hate to say stopwatch, because that sounds mean, but that's the way we got to roll. So, okay, so we're going to begin with Kristin Rosick. Kristin, Mrs. Rosick, you have two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and we will hear from you now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kristin Rosick, and I am an educator in the district. I have read the reopening strategy, and I would like to address a gap in the information I've noticed. I did not see any information about how the district plans to specifically address people of color and their higher risk of morbidity from COVID-19. African-Americans are 3.7 times more likely to die from the virus, and Latinos are 2.5 more times likely to die. Young people of color are more likely to suffer from complications, and their families and parents are at risk. There are also staff members who fall under this category. The safety measures mentioned today are not a failsafe, and there is also a great financial burden we must think about upon these families if they are hospitalized. I would like to mention our superintendent's statement. "We stand with you on June 4th. The difference in our future rests in our willingness and resolve to act and to do the right thing right now. To our African-American families, we see you, we hear you, and we stand with you in this fight for social justice. As a Latina woman, I would like to know how the district attempts to address this issue if we return to face-to-face learning, since it did not appear in the presentation about the reopening plan." Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, next is Mr. Ralph Hykenen. Mr. Hykenen, please go ahead with your comments.
Mrs. Horst, he's muted.
Mr. Hyer, can you unmute him? Mr. Hykenen?
I have asked him to unmute, but he's got to unmute himself. It's in the bottom left, if you're using a computer or iPad or something.
Yep.
We can move on to the next person while we come back to him.
We'll come back to you, okay? Kay Breeds? Kay Breeds, please go ahead. Okay, we can come back to you. Let's go on to Charles Cedarman. Mr. Cedarman, please go ahead.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Wait, who do I have? Mr. Cedarman?
Charles Cedarman.
Yes, sir, please go ahead. You've got two minutes.
Yeah, the unmute's a little challenging where the buttons pop up and everything. So anyhow, I just have two points to make, so that the communication of the plans are a little crisper. One is relative to electronics. Well, if I'm seeing or hearing you correctly, is the devices that most of us, if not all of us, got back in March, that those are the devices you're referring to that are ideally going back and forth to school and home. Is that what I'm reading into that? Is that what that device is you're referencing? I can't hear you. Okay, I'll assume it is. Okay, thank you. The one thing I would suggest there is some, have all the devices and the power cords and everything all look and feel the same, and they're subject to getting broken. So you might want to try to address some way, whether it's a parent action or what, of how and where to label things, because they all look the same, even though they have numbers on them, as well as how to safeguard them, you know, like some type of wrapper, text, you know, like you put on your phone. The other thing is, an obvious use case that's going to happen, most likely, that I've heard everything about day one, you know, whether it be face-to-face at that point in time, or you can elect to be virtual. I didn't hear a lot about the transition of day two of, we go, day one we're face-to-face, and day two, maybe a week later, maybe, or hopefully never, but then suddenly we're all virtual, similar to what happened back in March. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about what the predicted parent experience would be. It's not going to be the same as the Clarkston Virtual Learning, because I understand that's a whole program in itself. So you wouldn't just tap into that suddenly. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about what that experience would be, given that use case that's quite probable. All right, that's all that I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. All right, we'll move on to Kathy Noble. Mrs. Noble, I think you are activated, and you have two minutes.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, so I guess I'm just concerned, I understand that some major school districts have decided now to go all virtual, and I'm wondering about the thoughts that we're pouring our energies into a couple major things rather than focusing on just one. And I know that the decision is hard, but it seems that some major school districts have already decided that they're going to be online. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be better to just pour energies into the very best virtual program that will keep students and teachers safe. And the other comment I just wanted to make is, I know a school district, I'm not sure what state that opened, that had the death of a teacher. And I'm wondering, at what point do we decide it's not safe for the kids to be in school? And I'll be honest with you, I'm concerned as much or more so for the educators than I am for the students who seem to not contract the virus quite as often. Thank you for listening, and hello, everyone.
Thank you so much for your comments. Okay, move on to Meg. Meg, let's get you unmuted, and you have two minutes.
Hi, this is Ashley Fowler. We're having a...
Very good. Please, go ahead, Ashley. Thank you.
So one of my questions is, how will my child make up missing instruction time if they or myself were to be tested positive for COVID? Will you have any processes in place for them to then learn virtually for home for those two weeks? And also, another concern for myself is, you know, I have a first grader and a kindergartner coming into the district, and of course, that whole adding in the possibility of them wearing masks full-time, how that's going to affect them psychologically, their environment, those are all big concerns for me. And just how you're going to help them practice to keep those on. How are they going to keep them on? Because it's a hard thing for me to manage. So those are just two of my concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Sorry, I'm muted. Sorry about that. Okay. Mr. Hyer, can we try Mr. Hykenen again? Ralph Hykenen, are you still with us, and would you still like to address the board?
Mr. Hykenen, I'm going to put your hand down if you still want to address the board. If you can raise your hand again, we'll work with you on getting you, getting your audio work.
Back on the list. Okay, okay, let's...
Go to Meg?
No, we just did Meg. That was Ashley. Let's go on to Courtney Howell.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Please go ahead. You've got two minutes.
Thank you. You mentioned previously that there was going to be a parent advisory board established, and one of my concerns is just ensuring adequate representation to include more voices outside of the PTA, to ensure that families facing different scenarios have a forum to voice their input on decisions being made about potential paths forwards, both in-person and virtually. And, you know, this includes parents with different work scenarios and situations, and potentially families with children that are at higher risk and have immunocompromised or pre-existing conditions, just to take those considerations into effect. It was also mentioned that parents must make a decision regarding in-person versus virtual learning by August 7. I still don't feel like I have enough information about either option presented today to make a confident decision by the end of this week. At this time, I am personally leaning toward the virtual option, although I would really like to send my daughter back to school, have some reservations about both. But I do have some serious reservations, given our experience with the way that at-home learning was conducted earlier this year. I understand, as you say, it is not the same, but would appreciate more specifics as to how this would function, as my daughter's ability to excel academically is obviously a top priority. And I don't feel that working parents, or all parents for that matter, received adequate support previously to make this work in the various roles that they hold as homemakers, professionals, and parents. And then regarding the student cohorts and groups, would like to understand a little bit better regarding the in-person option, as wondering if there's plans to place higher-risk students with pre-existing medical conditions together and separate them from other children who are not as high-risk. So those are my concerns as a parent, and just wanted to put those forth, bring those forward as you are evaluating options for the best path forward for our community and our children.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. And next we have Mary. All right, Mary, you are live, and you have two minutes. Thank you.
Hello. I'd like to thank everybody for all the work that you've been doing this summer. I know that it is not an easy task, and I appreciate all the due diligence to make all the options available that you've been doing. My question is concerning families that choose the virtual option. Will there be a way for my students who are in elementary, my kids, to still be a part of their building community? For example, my kids attend Springfield Plains, will they still be a Dolphin for the semester or for the year if we choose to go virtual? Is there a way that they will be receiving updates or announcements from the administration? Is that something that's been explored or talked about? And that's, you know, just a question that I have, and that's all. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. So if questions were asked during that, I think those were captured by our administration, and they will get answers specifically back to you. It looks to me like those are all of the people at this time who wish to address the board on this topic. Wait, nope, I see one more. Do I have that right?
All of them are ones.
Nope. Okay, I have a couple more. I'm looking at Welch. All right, Mr. Hyer, you're still helping me with this, right? I have too many screens going. Okay, Welch?
Welch, and that's all we can see is your name, so I...
And then I have a phone number.
You have an older version of Zoom.
Okay.
That may not allow you to talk. So just hang tight. If there's any way you can quickly update, that would be the preferred option. But otherwise, we might have another workaround to get you. So we'll come back to you, but we'll jump to the telephone number.
Okay, so Welch, hold on. And then if you're that telephone number, we're activating you right now. I don't want to say your number out loud. So please, you've got two minutes. If you'll say your name for us, please, and you've got two minutes.
Hi, yes, I'm Deborah Brock. I live at 3137 Montclair Court. I'm a teacher at Clarkston High School, and I have my younger two children who'll be attending the high school this fall as well. The concerns that I have, and some questions, first of all, I'd say thank you for the administrative team who put together a phenomenal PowerPoint and presentation today. And I appreciate all the information and insight they've given us. A couple of questions directed towards, one towards Mr. Lucido, he mentioned about the students wearing masks. If they refuse to wear masks in our classrooms, I know there is going to be protocol enforcing these kids to wear masks, but will they be immediately removed from our classroom and immediately removed from the school? We just, as teachers, are concerned that we don't want to have to confront these students and get into any verbal disagreement with them. So what type of enforcement will happen when students refuse to do that, if they do? Hopefully, they don't. Another question would be, I know they were talking about socially distancing at the junior high and elementary, but as you know, our high school ordered two-person tables for the classrooms. So it would be literally impossible to, you know, move these tables apart. I mean, we have two people seated at each of these tables. So how are we going to socially distance now with the new furniture being ordered for the high school? And then we were talking, there was talk about bringing faculty members' children to the building if we did go online. My question would be, are the teachers going to be required to come into the building to teach if we do go online, if we do go virtual? And the last question I had was, if parents choose to go to virtual school prior to September 1, or prior to August 7, actually, is the deadline, but I know Dr. Ryan has extended that, you know, to September 1, if they choose to go virtual, would the district allow students to go to an online school, you know, working with a teacher, their scheduled teacher, and choose to drop the virtual program? So could it transfer from virtual to online if our school district does go online during the first semester? And that's all the concerns or questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Hyer, are we coming back to Welch, or is that something that... Or did you want me to skip ahead to Mrs. Roll?
Let's skip ahead to Mrs. Roll.
Okay, Julie Roll, please. You are unmuted, and we are ready to hear from you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you. This is Julie Roll. I have a 10th grade son, who is also enrolled in CSM Tech. And like a lot of the other parents and board members that have spoken, I don't feel like I have enough information yet to make a decision one way or the other. Although I did check with the Clarkston Virtual Program and learned that the CSM Tech courses are not going to be available in the virtual program. So it seems that we will have to send him into the classroom if face-to-face is the direction that the district goes, at least for those two classes. I do have concerns about how we expect families to be on the honor system with screening their students for symptoms or fever. I would love to believe that everyone in the community will do the right thing and be monitoring their students on a daily basis. But as we saw in the news with a student in Indiana who had a pending COVID test and went to school on the first day, I have concerns that everyone will do the right thing. So it would feel a little more comfortable if students were to be screened. Although I do understand the resources for that, and just building that into the beginning of the day would be quite challenging. So definitely looking forward to receiving more information and trying to make our decision. And I appreciate the hard work that everyone is doing to try to figure out the best path forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. All right, so Welch is our remaining...
Was there somebody else who had their hand up? If you had your hand up, and it's not up now, please put it back up. I just want, sometimes the list jumps around a little bit. I want to make sure we don't miss anybody who wanted to address the board. And so Welch, I'm going to try to get you on board here again, so just hang on one second.
Hello? 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 Did it work?
Yep, go ahead.
This is Carol Welch.
Oh, hi, Carol. Great, thank you so much.
Hi, thank you.
Great, nice to hear from you. We have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Just a question, please. I was wondering, that picture of Bailey Lake Elementary, where they positioned the desks, just how far apart are those desks from each other? Like what, you know, like what is the distance? Is it one foot or two foot? And is that like the usual side of the classroom in the elementary school?
Okay, Amanda Pickering? Mr. Hire, are we ready to go with Ms. Pickering?
Yes, I think you also have an older version of Zoom, so hang on one second. And if anybody else would like to address the board, please, go ahead and raise your hand. I'm going to...
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, is that you, Mrs. Pickering?
That's me.
Excellent, okay, way to go.
So, I'm Amanda Pickering, and I am a teacher at the high school. I have a lot of questions, and many of them have been kind of covered by other people who have spoken up in the comments so far, so I just want to focus on two things. The first was more of a comment and not so much a question, kind of piggybacking off of the last commenter. I can tell you that knowing that the class sizes at the high school will not be reduced by many, I can tell you that social distancing within a classroom with about 30 kids isn't possible. So, just, I know that it's impossible for all of the board members to get into all of the school buildings and kind of measure between desks and all of that, and I also know that it's impossible to know exactly how many people will be in a classroom, because not everyone has made that decision yet. But if class sizes are the same as they always have been, social distancing, at least at the high school, is going to be near impossible. My question, though, is regarding substitute teachers. I know that in the past, it's been very difficult for us to get an adequate amount of guest teachers, and if we're in a position where people are being required to be out for quarantining, or because their kids get sick, or whatever the case may be, in the past, if we haven't had enough guest teachers, and if we're trying to create the system where subs aren't moving between buildings to kind of mitigate the spread, where are those substitute teachers going to come from? And that's my question. Thank you for all of your hard work on all of this.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate the comments. All right, Stephanie Banks.
There we go. Okay, I have a... Hello, I'm Stephanie Banks, and my question's regarding more of my senior in high school, who actually only has two half-credits to graduate. Will she be able to alter her schedule? Because in this current situation, she and I are concerned about the stress of either in-face going back and forth, or trying to do her two credits virtually. And so my concern or question is, will students be able to adjust their schedules, or even graduate early, to avoid some more of this contamination possibilities? Thank you.
Right, thank you for your question. Obviously, someone very specific will have to get back to you on that. Okay, Stacy J.
Stacy, it looks like you just need to unmute, and we'll be able to hear you.
If you unmute on your end, I think...
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, great.
All right, this is Brian Joyner, Stacy's husband.
Hi there.
I'm pretty much concerned, other people have brought up as well, the timing in order to go fully online and understand the curriculum, based on my son being a senior this year. Also, I'd like the board to reconsider the positivity tests. Currently, my brother-in-law was tested negative, and now he's tested positive, so you can get a false negative. So it's really important, when children or students have these symptoms, to really understand the testing considerations, where you can still get false negatives, and not allow them to return to school, to basically possibly expose other individuals, even though they are wearing masks, it still occurs. Thirdly, I've lost my train of thought here, sorry. The other item is contact tracing. In the corporate area where I'm at right now, I did not hear one item about contact tracing. It is of ultimate importance, based on the COVID-19, to understand the traceability and detection as you're exposed to individuals. At a corporate level, we've gone three levels deep and found positive results within my company, so it is utmost importance, even if the student does not have any symptoms, to understand the contact tracing of this, and I have not heard that mentioned at all in this meeting. And that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else among our attendees tonight who would like to address the board Can I see Jamie?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can, you've got two minutes, please go ahead.
Okay, I was just wondering, why is virtual learning different from distance? If the state makes us stay home, why can't we all go virtual? I was informed that because Clarkson Virtual is more self-paced, that there's more room to advance in the curriculum as able for the student, and I was wondering, is that not as much possible with the distance learning, and if so, why? I guess I just don't understand why distance learning is the... Why it's not just virtual or in-person, and why distance is part of it? That's all.
All right, thank you so much for your comments. And now we have Lori Groff.
Hi.
All right, great, you're unmuted, you're great, please go ahead, you have two minutes.
Hopefully, this is just a quick question, and it may have been answered already. If CSM Tech is not included in the virtual learning, but a student wants to be in CSM Tech and go virtual, can they do like a half a day, half of each? Like I said, I don't know if that was answered somewhere else, and I've had a couple people, we've talked about that, if it's not an option, but they want to do virtual, is there a half-and-half option? Thanks.
All right, thank you for your question. Obviously, someone from the academic side will have to get back to you with a specific answer and option for that. Okay, I have another, now I have a phone-in question. It looks like you're unmuted, if you'll please give us your name, and then you have two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is Lisa Moldiven, and I have a student going into junior high. I'm just curious, for in-person, have you made any decisions on if you will run junior high as teams, like you do for middle school, and just have teachers rotating to the classrooms to keep the number of students out of the hallway during passing? And also, just going back to the sub-question, have you considered not having specials, especially in our elementary schools, and using those teachers as supports in a lot of our classrooms, because I know we're losing aides, and also then utilizing them as your building sub, so that we do not have people in and out of our district, in and out of buildings? So, that's it, thank you all so much for all your hard work.
All right, thank you for your comments. All right, it looks like perhaps we have heard from our participants this evening. Oh, wait, I have one more, I have Mrs. Hughes. Whoa.
Sorry.
Mrs. Hughes. Ding! All right, Mrs. Hughes, you're live, you have two minutes, please.
I just want to say thank you to all of you for all the hard work you've done, and I know that the administration's been working very feverishly. I do want to mention that there were a few CSM Tech questions this evening, and so I felt that I should address these, and let you know that CSM Tech staff are working very hard, whether we are in-person or we are remote, we plan on having the same quality of education for our students. So for those parents that are concerned, we don't want you to worry about that, and I also want to mention that there were a few questions about whether students could be halftime CSM Tech and then halftime virtual, and it was my understanding recently that that was an agreed-upon possibility, but I don't, I'm not speaking for the administration, but that is what I was told to say to a few of our parents. So, I just want to reassure the parents of the students of CSM Tech that the staff is fully ready, whether we are in-person or we are going to be remote. We plan on continuing the specials that we did in the spring, which were weekly theme ideas and different things that we can do to continue to bring the culture into the classroom, as if we were online or virtual. And I want to thank you all again, because I think that this is a very tough time, and I know for myself, I have been, I don't have children in the district anymore, but I can't believe the decisions that people need to make for their own children right now, and I thank you all for taking such great care and consideration for the rest of the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes, fortuitous you were in the audience tonight and could address some of those questions. I want to thank everyone who attended tonight. I think the highest number I saw was 508 at one point, participants in our audience And so clearly, we know how vital this decision is for our families, for our staff, for everyone who's listening in tonight. So those of you who either chatted a question or asked a question, I know those were captured by our administration, and so someone will be getting back to you with those specific answers, and continuing to develop Q&amp;As or FAQs as the weeks go on here, and as Dr. Ryan alluded to, as more and more information and data reveals itself. But I think a lot of good feedback was offered tonight from those of you in our audience, and some important things that, you know, that I think we need to take forward as we continue to evolve this plan, and as we get prepared to meet again next week and approve the plan, as several trustees pointed out, that we are required to do by the, you know, by the governor. I'll just sort of wrap up, and then we'll move on, you know, with the rest of our meeting, and give everyone one last chance to comment under Item 9, under any other topic that might be of interest to anyone else this evening. You know, but as we've been developing these plans over the course of the summer, and, you know, a lot of you may not know, but Dr. Ryan has invited Mr. Need as the Vice President, and myself as the Board President, to participate in the cabinet meetings since the shutdown happened back in March, and I would hazard a guess that we could be the only Board President and Vice President that has sat in regularly in the state of Michigan on an administrative cabinet meeting. I think we have that level of trust and respect and collaboration here in Clarkston. And I think it's a sign... Sorry, my dog just walked into the screen, she's been quiet this whole time. You know, that we have that high level of trust and respect for our partnership, and so, you know, we have a sense of how much this has been on our minds, and how much operationally it was going to take to get our families, our students, and our staff back in school this fall. And so I think what's been weighing on my mind this whole time is what it was going to add to our day operationally, and what that could potentially cost us in terms of instructional time. And I listened to Ms. Mahoney speak, and I have heard, you know, from several staff members, their concerns of how instruction could change. And we have made so much progress in the last several years, in terms of what we know is good for kids, in terms of learning, in terms of brain research, in terms of how kids learn. And I think there is a real sense of change, and of what we might lose because of the limitations of this virus, and so none of us take this lightly, and you see those pictures of desks in a row, and it feels like a step backwards, right? I mean, it does, and so, we, that weighs on a lot of us. But we know our teachers, and we know, as several of you said, that the relationships that we, that I think our district, that really is a hallmark of what we do here in Clarkston, is what's going to get us, excuse me, what's going to get us all through this. And so, you know, hopefully, we are all back in school in person, and our students are looking in your eyes, and you're looking in their eyes, and those relationships are founded, and that, to me, is what's going to make all the difference in the world for these students and families as we move forward. So, I think that we have certainly the feedback that we need as a board and as an administration to move forward, and I have no doubt that we will continue to hear from many of you over the course of the week, and I would encourage all of you to continue to send us your thoughts by email, by phone, and let us continue to refine this plan as necessary, and we'll see you again next Monday, and we will finalize the plan as we need to. So, with that said, of course, I've lost the agenda here, we will move on to Item 6, 6.1, approval of personnel changes. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the personnel changes as listed on the attached sheet.
Support. Are there any questions or discussion on the personnel changes? Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Hire?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Was that me?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mrs. Egan?
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes, the motion carries. Item 7 is report items, there are none. Item 8 is discussion items, there are none. Item 9 is citizen comments. At this time, citizens are welcome to address the board on any topic at this point. And so I'll ask, are there any citizens in the audience who wish to address the board on any topic at this time? If so, we'll just follow the same procedure, just raise your hand, I'll give you one moment Seeing none, we'll move on. Item 10 is information items. We have two upcoming board meetings this month, and I will say, Board, Mr. Need and I have been looking into the possibility of returning to in-person board meetings, which would be my preference, I know. We're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place, if you will, of the governor's executive order limiting in-person gatherings to 10, and the Open Meetings Act. Right now, as you can see, just looking at this, there's more than 10 of us on the screen. I mean, at a minimum, our gatherings are 10, between the seven of us, Dr. Ryan, Mrs. McLean, and our Independence Television Technician, who takes care of our broadcasts, which then would leave no room for the public, which then violates the Open Meetings Act, not having our public be able to attend in person. So, we're trying to navigate that, and then see if we can possibly meet in person, but then provide remote access for our public, which we're not sure violates the Open Meetings Act. So as soon as we can navigate the intricacies of the OMA and the EO, we'll let you know. But certainly, our hope would be that we could return in person, because I think sitting here behind a computer screen while we're asking our families and our staff to return in person, I don't like it one bit. So, please stay tuned for that. So our next meeting at this time is next Monday, August 10th. At this time, it'll be at 5:30 via this platform, via Zoom, and then Monday, August 24th, if we're still meeting via Zoom, it'll be at 5:30. If we are able to return in person, it'll be in the boardroom at 7 o'clock. Item 11 is adjournment. May I have a motion, please?
I move to adjourn.
Support.
Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Hire?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.